Okay, good, go on, okay.
I'd call the media to order and begin the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. This is a work session today to collect some information. We have Lowell Davis here from Eagleview, and he's going to tell us everything we need to know about aerial pictometry.
And I'll tell you everything, but I'll tell you what I know anyway. I probably start off with just a little bit of PowerPoint. I'm not going to PowerPoint you guys to death, because, yeah, it all set who knows. I'll show you just a little bit about the company. I'll talk about what we do, and that's in here a little bit. We'll show some high-resolution imagery over in Booneville, so you can see a county that's close by here, and a city that's close by, Warren County there. That'll be in the live demonstration. I'll try and show you Change Finder as well today, so you can get an idea how that works, and you can see the different changes in the properties. And I'll also show you the integrations. I think you guys have WTH, if I'm not mistaken here at the county, and I think you have EXO. Is that right? Okay, yeah. So there's an integration with both of those things as well. So we'll go ahead and just jump into this. So this is who we are as a company. We're actually out of, our side of the things is actually out of Rochester, New York. We were founded in 1998, and we do the aerial imagery, and we also do the software. So we have the hardware and the software that kind of goes with it. So we do, I kind of like to say it's almost like an Apple. We kind of design everything, the planes, the lenses, the camera systems, everything are designed by us and what we do. There's no off-the-shelf stuff. It's all custom manufactured for how we fly and what we do. This is a county map of the current county customers, so all the ones in dark blue that you see there are currently customers of ours. We're actually going to be adding Pulaski County up there to the north. I think they're going on Monday to get their sign, so they'll be in any county with us. Currently, I think we have about seventy, I want to say it's seventy-seven of the ninety-two counties actually fly and work with us in some way here in Indiana. So when we fly, we deliver this, and I'll show you this in the demo as well. Most of, a lot of the flights that happen in the country and in the state, state flight, that sort of thing, it's just a straight-down shot, and that's fine. It gives you an idea of what's there and, you know, a property or whatever might be there, but it really doesn't, it's not how we see the world and where we're going about things. So we do the straight-down shots, the board of imagery, but we also do what's called oblique imagery. So you can actually tell what that structure is then by looking around it. It's intelligent imagery, and I'll show you in the discussion, but in the presentation, the live demonstration. You can actually look at that, move in on it, and we can tell you the distance of that building, we can tell you the height of it, we can tell you the area of the roof, pretty much anything you want to know, even the pitch of the roof, we can actually do. So there's a lot of different things that you can derive from that imagery, so we call it intelligent imagery, and how you folks will use it. This is just a sample of kind of what it will look like. So you can see, when you look at that, all of the information that you can derive from it. It's not just a picture. You can get the area of the parking lot there, you can get the distance going back, you can get the height of that building. There's really so much you can do, there's so much information you can derive from just an image like that. Okay, cut these down. These are the planes that we fly. They're hashtag Pipers. We also do some Cessna 172s. Again, these are planes that we have, and this pod that's underneath the belly here, let's see if this will fly today. I don't know if you can hear that or not, but they rotate back and forth. So what we do is when we go across the county, we send the map over to Flight Planning. They put together a map for you folks. That's what we're based on the quote for the county, and then they do the flight lines. They get all that together, and then we'll go back and forth across the county. This thing goes back and forth and gets us just a ton of different images. And then what we do in Rochester is we put all that together, and then that becomes pictometry, what we call pictometry for the county. I asked a lot of those out, so you wouldn't have to look at them. Different departments that use it, a lot of different departments. It seems like different meetings that you go to, it's just different ones that pop up all the time. But GIS is a big one, public safety is a big one as well. They can use this. So the Sheriff's Department, the City Police Department, we even have a mobile app on the phone that is included when you fly with us. So I was telling the gentleman out here in the Sheriff's Department, he could take his phone, and if they're out in a rural area, say it's 12 o'clock at night, a lot of us very rural as you get down in this part of the state, he literally could sit at the end of the driveway and hit the Find Me button. It's got a Find Me button on it. It will bring him right to that property, and then he could literally look around as if it's daylight, 1:00 in the afternoon, be able to completely look around that property and know exactly what they're going into before they have to go back down that lane or, you know, wherever they might be, or maybe a locked gate. That's another thing that seems to be surfacing a lot as time goes on. A lot of the properties are not blocked, and they have gates, so it's difficult to get back because people just don't want me back there, with your stories about all the time. This allows you to be able to look at that without having to go back on somebody's property or try and get through that gate or whatever it might be that you need to do. These are the different ones. The reassessment is huge. You guys are really the drivers, probably for us and the city. And what we do, Public Works, Street Department, the Health Department has used it, probation has used it to look at, look at a house if they're going to make a probation call, something like that. You just, it's amazing how many of the different departments actually use it in some fashion or another. The nice thing about it is, of all of those counties that you saw there that we fly with, they have a lot of historical imagery. So I think Indianapolis has flown with us since 2007, so they can see all the changes that's happened in Indianapolis from way back in 2007. So these archives, the more you fly or the more these counties have been with us, you know, they have a history of what's going on at their county as well, because they see all the changes and all the different things that are happening, which is really neat. And then we also have disaster response. So say a tornado would come through here, it has to meet EF4 specs or greater, but if it would, we'll come back in and we'll fly up to 250 square miles free of charge for you guys, because we want to make that data available to you guys so you happen to use in case something catastrophic happens, so. Before and after. We do a ton of this stuff, especially down in Florida and along the coast down there and that kind of thing. We just flew Southern Kentucky this last year. I also cover Kentucky. We did quite a bit down there. This is the mobile application, so this is what I was talking about. All your layers, everything can be in here, your address points, ownership information, any of that kind of thing can be in here. This goes along with the cost of flying that we do, so, and it's in the Apple Store and in the Google Store, so it doesn't matter, you know, which operating system you're on, you can use either one, so you can get it for you. And I can try and show it to you today. I might be able to pull it up for you that way. I think the rest of this I got written up for you guys. Yeah, I did. So that's the end of that.
You mentioned you have this in seventy-seven counties. How, out of those seventy-seven counties, is this, do you have statistical reassessment contracts, or is this just a tool that those contractors use?
So some of the counties will do it on their own, you know, will be, some of the counties will just use this if they have a staff that's big enough to kind of do what they need to do.
I have staff up too.
Yeah. That really depends on the county, you know, how they're going to try and do things, you know, that sort of thing. Just, you know, with the imagery, you have the imagery. There are still times you're going to have to go out and look at things. It doesn't solve all the problems, you know, it's not an end-all, be-all. It's a tool, like you're saying, that people use. So some of the counties that have the staff and have the manpower or womanpower, you know, they can, they will use this just solely to do their reassessment work. Other ones that don't will use this as a tool to help them kind of achieve what they need to achieve there at the county. And I know even some of the reassessment vendors, you know, counties will, you know, pair up with and that kind of thing, a Nexus or someone, they will come in and they will use this imagery if they have it at the county to help do the reassessment as well. So, yeah, it's kind of, kind of both.
Yeah, my concern is currently, we have people in Booneville, so they're looking at the data live.
Yeah.
So with this, depending on the flyovers, and there's cost per flight, right?
Yes, there is, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So basically, once you fly over, I'm looking at an old picture. I'm looking at old data until the new flyover, right?
You are. So when we fly it, it's quick to get to you. Usually, it's about a 30-day turnaround timeframe. So if we fly it at, say, we'll start flying some in December here before the snow comes and west leaves drop, and then in the spring. So say we flew it in December and you get it in January, so you can start working with it quickly. But if you don't fly for another two years, there is that gap in between where you're not going to have updated areas as well.
Right.
So if there are changes in that timeframe, yes, if you're out, yeah.
But you can do another flyover requested?
You can, yeah. And we have different counties that do different sorts of things. You know, depending on the change or depending on what they want to see, you know, in Indianapolis, for instance, you know, we fly them, they've got the opportunity to take advantage of three flights a year, if you can imagine, spring, summer, and fall. They usually do two. So some counties will do annually, some counties will do every two years. They feel like every two years is a good sweet spot. Other counties that aren't changing a lot and maybe aren't using it, you know, as their primary way to reassess and that kind of thing, might do every three years. So it's just, it's kind of a myriad of different ideas that people, you know, kind of come up with. So, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Does that answer your question?
I think it may be helpful, and maybe Mindy can explain, what we currently do now for the viewers that are watching that they really have no idea what we do or how this process is taking place. I think if you could explain that, because then if they're just watching this, they, some people may think this is what we do already. Do you know what I'm asking? Because right now, don't Tyler Technologies drive to the property? Don't, do they get out, take photos?
Yes.
And then how often do they do that?
We look at a quarter of the county every year.
Okay.
Every year, we're looking at a quarter of the county and a portion of each property class. So you have residential, agricultural, and commercial and industrial. We have to look at a certain percentage of each one of those class codes and percent of the county each year part of the statistical reassessment state program.
And a lot of people don't think, I'm just saying, people don't know that. People, viewers watching, don't know what the process is right now and what we're trying to get to.
And I think this is a great tool. I would love to be able to view like this, but it's not going to replace what we need. It's not going to replace that. It's going to be a great asset, but, you know, when you're looking at a house from here and here, from street view, does that tell me how many bathrooms? Does that tell me that I have a basement? Does it tell me if that little area in the back, that screen in porch, or is that living space? It's not going to replace, people still have to go and physically look at these reassessments.
Yeah, I mean, when you've got conditioning grade, I mean, there's conditioning grade on some of these too. On some of this stuff, you will be able to get in close enough that you will be able to see, is it a three-seasons room on the back or is it just a covered area? You know, we can get in pretty close now and look at it that way, so we can determine that, but there still is that gap in time, you know, where if you are trying to do some other things, you know, you're, yeah.
Like bathrooms and things like that. I mean, obviously, you can't tell all of the interior.
Yeah, we can't, no.
That we have to have a cathedral ceiling, right? You can't tell that from there. Or like a garage, you can't see if it has a concrete floor versus a gravel floor.
No. Not, you know, if we can't get inside, you know, if we can see like a barn, you know, if there's an opening or something, you might be able to tell. If you need somebody to walk inside of it and actually see, is it, you know, this or that.
And Tyler Technologies does that? They go up in someone's property, in their house?
If we have new construction.
I'm talking about already there.
If something's already there, they do a drive-by, and they're looking at their existing sketch versus what they're seeing with their eyes. And if they see an addition or if they see an add-on, or if they see something different, they flag that. And also, they see, like, we're just doing that entry now for the last quarter. There's an effective year change. So what that changes, based on the year of the structure, this one was a 1923-built home, and while he was there, he could see that this dwelling had a new roof, new windows, new doors, remodeled, didn't have a building permit for these things, but he could see those. So he changed that effective year, which increases the assessed value, which is better for the county. Those are things I worry that we might miss.
Yeah.
And especially with the cost per flyover, we're looking at old data versus me at your house looking at current data.
So did he see if they had new bathrooms?
I'm sorry.
Did he see that they had new bathrooms too?
Remodelled.
What you talked about with doors, roofs, outside amenities, and just my perception is, I can look at the picture, or you can do it, no, you have to get inside of the structure to determine if there's anything that occurred. And if I'm not mistaken, Indiana Law has some required.
And if it's like this new construction, we're going to know.
If it's new, construction's different than existing. And I was building inspector for a year and issued less than 100 permits for everything, so we don't have a huge volume of that. And taking back, I got one other question. If you visit a parcel of property, how many years will it be before you go back to that property again, in the current scenario, how it works?
That, that particular parcel, if I review it this year, I'll review it again in four years.
Four years then, okay.
But doing this, and I take a picture, and that picture stays the same for four years, even though I'm looking at a whole nother quarter of the county, I would be looking at old data for the next three years versus being out in the field and looking at current data while we're there. Yes, it's a whole new quarter, but each quarter is live as I'm looking at it, not an old picture.
But it's still every four years.
And that's where I think you're trying to compare apples and oranges. Yes, we only visit that parcel every four years.
Then it'll be?
We're current, we're live. It's live when we're out there looking at it. So if you take a picture of the whole county in one year, then by year four, we're looking at that, and they might have something completely different. They might have remodeled their house, they might have added a pool, they might have done something else, but we won't know that because it's an old photo. And that would be through year two, three, and a year.
But if you do it in the first year, and my property has not been remodeled, then I remodel it, it'll be four years before you catch me unless the neighborhood, neighbor guy catches me.
It depends on where we're at in the county.
I'm just saying, if you visit me, because you do 25% of the county at one time, you won't be back to review that to see that that occurred for four years. I mean, I get the fact that you're doing 25%, and you've got current data, you do 25%, you've got current data, 25% current data.
Right.
But you're always lagging four years, because you're only doing 25%. So it's always a four-year lag. What he's doing is taking a picture in year one, and if he doesn't fly it again until year four, then whatever that snapshot was in year one is what it'll be carried through for four years, unless a building permit or something, you know, that you go visit or check it, but that's what I'm saying. But it's still a four-year review, is what you're in essence doing. And in our county, it'd be good to know how many actual changes aren't caught outside of permits. Permits would trigger it, others doing it with, you know, putting a roof on a building or whatever is probably a non-permit on it.
I mean, I could show you, like, he's currently reviewing TELCITY, and we're doing the data entry on it, and there's multiple things that we're adding. There's a lot of grave changes.
Triggered by remodeling?
Remodels, just adding something or removing something.
Something that has actually messed or taken.
New siding, new windows, that all.
I don't think anybody's saying you guys aren't doing your job. What we're saying is, what are we possibly missing that we can get more of?
Year two, three, and four, everything's just going to stay the same, because we're not going to know if there's anything changing. And if we don't raise or lower our assessments, then, you know, if.
We do your transit.
It won't be correct data, I guess I should say.
What do you do if someone refuses to let you in their house?
We have to assume, yes.
You just assume?
We have to assume.
What do you do? What, how do you assume? What?
Look based on the square footage, two bedrooms, or two bathrooms, two and a half bathrooms. You know, that, if we can't get the correct data, and that's any program, it's only as good as the data that you have.
I'm just asking.
So if somebody refuses to let you in, then we have to assume, so we put something in there, and then if we get it wrong, then that's where they can come in and file the appeal. But, I mean, I, this is absolutely nothing against, nothing against you. I just feel like, we're in TELCITY right now, and TELCITY is, if he's looking at it live, if we did this, and he took the picture four years ago, and we're on year four, still looking at TELCITY, we will miss more because of that old picture than if we were out there actually in that field and looking at it and seeing it live in person.
How many days a week do you go in the field? How many days a week are you in the field?
A new construction?
No. How many days a week are you in the field?
Me personally?
All of you.
Or Tyler. Tyler is in the field a minimum of three days a week. And then from doing sales disclosures, they work for this county five days a week.
I'm not, I'm not saying y'all don't do your job, but nothing to do with that. I look at the safety issue of this, and I can tell you why. Because I've rolled up on somebody's property with a warrant in my hand for an animal, and I've had shock guns put in my face, and I do not want anyone's safety at all put in jeopardy. And that, this day in time, you better believe it's going to happen. It will happen, especially out in the county.
I got this right with that. And again, this is a tool. It's not replacing anything. We still have to go do these things. It's an added tool, but it's also an added expense, a huge added expense. Unless you've changed those numbers that you gave me, you know, just per flight, for Perry County, is $75,460 per flight. And that doesn't replace this contract. It may take some of it away, lower it, but it's not going to replace that. And that doesn't include, that $75,460 does not include pictometry. That's an additional $14,450 with an additional $7,225 per flight. So whether we fly it two years, three years, four years, those numbers aren't going to change. Those are going to stay the same, and we still have to do all of these other aspects for the job every day. And again, no disrespect to anybody, but I would love to have this. But as many times as we've looked into it, it's the cost. It always comes back to the cost.
Pictometry definition, the numbers that are assigned to this or programmed and run into this and determines heights and parking size.
Pictometry's just, you mean, have the name come about?
Yeah, what's the extra $14,000 for? What's pictometry for these girls?
So the flights change.
Change finder. That's putting it side by side, and this has something, and this one didn't have it.
That's your change finder, I think.
Explain change finder, too.
And more, do we need to go out there, basically like we're doing right now out in the field, flagging it for new construction.
Yeah, go ahead now. We're getting a little off-topic, because you're here today.
That's okay.
We'll debate this at a later date.
No, it's okay. It's no problem. So this is where any of the departments that are using this, whether it's the accessories department or public safety, 911, highway department, whatever it might be, this is one of the places, this, we deliver this software along with, it's a web-based product, so you can go in, I'll sit down for just a second, and you can actually get the information then on the building. So if we wanted to, let's say, a distance on this building, we can start here at the bottom, and we can draw over, and we can get a distance on that building, and we can pin that. And then let's say we want to get a height of the structure. So we can come in here, we can grab the heights tool, which is up on the right there, and we can put this as a base of the structure, and we can draw up here and just, it will give you a height. You'll notice that there's algorithms built in that automatically straighten the line, so to make sure that it's straight line with it. Areas of things, be it farmland, you know, roof, whatever it might be that you want to look at, you can come in here and you can get the area of a specific spot, you know, we can do this on the ground, you can manipulate this around however you want it. That can be changed. We've got acres there. You can do square feet. Any of these different sorts of measurements can be changed, inches, square feet, nautical miles, you name it, they've got it in here. And these are all the different, up here on the right, are all the different things that you can do within here. I was just showing you, you know, essentially, the ones that are probably used the most. We do have a distance ground measurement, which is really neat, so you can do two points here, and it will give you the distance in the ground, too. Highway department will use this sort of thing when they're taking a look at land, and then, also. Distance, then we have a location, too, in case you need to call somebody out here. You can, sorry. You can get a location, too, as far as like a latitude longitude goes. If you ever need to get like emergency personnel or anything out there, sometimes I'll use the latitude longitudes. Ground slope is pretty neat as well. Again, the highway department, some of the field crews will use this sort of thing. So you can see when we take a look at that, it gives you the ground slope change, the elevation difference, and the distance. So you can see how water drains, that sort of thing as well, when they're using it out in the field, kind of to get them, you know, an idea how much the land changes, that kind of thing. Here is where we always timestamp everything that we fly in case anybody comes in and wants to dispute anything or ask questions about when was it taken. We give you the date that it was flown down here. This is a number of images, so we give you all of the images of this particular building, because sometimes there'll be different angles that may show something that you couldn't get from the one that the algorithm chooses is the best one. So it might be canted just a little bit, you might be able to see just a little bit of a different area or something like that. So we include those in there. And then for the counties that have flown with us, you know, a couple times over the years, all the dates are in here down here that you can look at. You can also say you wanted to export this out. Say you had like a PTO meeting or something, and you wanted, you know, this was on there and they had disputes or something. You can come down here at the bottom, and you can export this out as PDF. We'll see if the wifi would keep up down here. And then it will export that image, and, you know, then you can put it in a file or something if you want, if they come in, that kind of thing. A lot of people don't even print them out for like your meetings or, you know, just anything as it relates to public safety or anything. They'll go ahead and put this up when the taxpayer comes in, and then you can look at it, you know, see what they, what they're using, and stuff. That is the, that is essentially the Connect Explorer, the web-based product that we have in a nutshell. You also do another feature here in this, I'm trying not to get too long for you guys.
On your flyovers?
I'm sorry?
On your flyovers, I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
No, you're fine.
On your flyovers, are there certain times of the year that you would rather do this with the leaves off, with the, what, what have you?
So there's just two times a year that we do it. So coming up here at. So coming up here after the November timeframe, usually towards the end of November, first part of December, the leaves are down, all the wind and, and the rain is taking the leaves off, and it's before the snow comes.
Okay.
So we only fly in those two times. And then usually, for you guys in the spring, probably early March, you know, once the snow leaves and before the leaves start coming on the trees.
Okay.
You know, depending on.
Yes, better images.
Yeah, because we want you to be able to look around the structures as much as you can without, without leaf cover being a problem.
How does that work? Like, obviously, we're heavily wooded.
Yeah.
Like, even though the leaves are down and there's a, if there's a lot of trees, can you, can you get down there?
So I'm, I'm gonna, I've got a bookmark for you guys, because I knew you guys wanted to know that. I just kind of did this area here, so you guys could kind of see how things are measured on these land and, and that sort of thing. So, I'll take you to kind of like an area that's kind of wooded there in Boone County over there, or in Booneville. This, if you have two different years, you can compare the images side by side. This is a change finder, but say you've got multiple years of imagery you've flown with us. You could, you could choose one year here, and you could choose another year here, and then you can look at them side by side as well in, in this application. So you can bookmark things in here that you wanna look on. I have a bunch of different things in here. We've got shootout scenes, we've got all kinds of different things. This is Warren County. I bookmarked this last night. So you can do this as well. You could bookmark things in their properties, different things that you wanna look, look at. Same way with public safety, same way with any of the different departments that might use this. They can have their own sub-organization in here, and they can have all of their own things that are of interest to them too, that only they look at. So, you know, outside of the assessor's office, it's, it's applicable to a lot of other departments as well. This is, this is kind of outside, so I moved outside of Boone County is what I did, or not Boone County, but Warren County, Booneville. So, there's a couple things here. So this is a little more wooded. And then we can look at that one. There's some you just can't get. There's one wood there that, you know, this starts to get, and you can see, I don't think we've moved around probably yet. You can see the different sides. See like the porch thing back there? You can probably, just gotta cover the open area, the pool. So you can move around it north, south, east, and west, and look at it straight down as well. And again, you can measure on all of this. You can do the heights, the distances, the area, you know, that kind of thing. Move it in and out. You can look at neighborhood level, which is very close. You can look at a community level, which is a county view. You can look at city, state, it's really kind of whatever it is that you want, how you want to look at it. Now, just let's say you get into something like this. So this is where the leaves off, you know, and this is, but you have these sorts of trees. So if we go in here. I hope we can try and look at it from this way. So, and we can move in here. So that's one where it's surrounded kind of by trees a little more. But this is about the best we could do. That starts to pixel again, you get too far. About there. Now we can move around, and we can take a look at this. So you can see on the side there. There's the back of it. You can't really get a good view of it because of the trees. And this is the other direction here, but, you know. It, it's, it's about the best we can do, because, you know, some of the leaves do, we're not.
Other county like that, we'll have a lot in the northern part of the county like that.
Yeah, I mean, you know. And this is one where it kind of butts up, you know, to the property there. And you can kind of see. On the screen, it's clear, so it's pixelated a little bit. And again, that's what you can see from the one side. You know, from the back, because the leaves are close again. And then from this side, and then that's how you, you work around. I wanted to make sure that we had some of that here as well, because I know you folks are very, we're all down here, and that's a consideration as well, so. What, what questions do you have on, on this? Do you guys have questions on this?
So this may be a silly question, but.
There's numbers on those.
I feel like there's a lot of properties in Perry County that buildings kind of appear, you know, out of nowhere, you know, if you're on, especially along the river, these little camps.
Yeah.
Could this possibly generate extra income for us? Because we're finally being able to find out, okay. I mean, how do, because you guys aren't gonna know that somebody just built a cabin down the road.
Well, that's what they're, that's what they're out doing and reviewing.
But they wouldn't know for four years also, like.
Right.
Because I know in Rome right now, or there's issues in Rome about these cabins that just mysteriously appear on the river.
Right.
It seems like we could capture this.
It depends on when they get around to going there. They might be going there this year, they might be going there in three years, yes, but we can't review every single parcel every year.
I guess the question is for Eagleview, when you take the pictures, and if there's a new building, will it tell us that, like, from what you guys, from what we have, and all of a sudden, will it capture that and give a notification or something if this wasn't there the previous flight?
Yeah, so I, I went out of, I went out of the other, the other Connect Explorer, which is how you do just the misery itself. This is actually called change analysis. So what this does is, and I'm gonna see if the, if the wifi can keep up here, this one takes this a little more intensive. This will actually show you between two years of imagery what's changed across the entire county. And it will show it to you visually, based on properties. So this will tell you everything that's newly built, everything that's changed in some way, everything that's demolished, so, you know, it's fair and equitable for everybody, because it will show things. A lot of times people tear things down and, you know, they don't come in necessarily and tell you, like, tore that down barn a couple years ago. What this does is, say you flew in twenty-six, and then you came back and flew in twenty-eight. It will show you everything that's changed in the entire county in between twenty-six and twenty-eight. It'll show you everything demolished, newly built, changed in some fashion. And what we do is, we take a look.
I mean, in my opinion, that's, that's huge. I mean, I think that we generate possibly a lot more property taxes, because we're finding more stuff that's.
But that would be, that's fabulous. That it's only gonna find things based on an old picture. If, if that was two years ago, and that's now.
Yeah.
But that's flying every two years.
Yeah, that's what we.
If that was two years ago, and we don't fly again for two more years, it's gonna look like that for four years. It would almost need to be every year or every two years to be up to date.
Does that make sense, Pam? Yeah.
This would be run every two years, if you guys flew every two years, which I think is what we proposed, was every two years, for long for you guys. I think.
What's the question? Was it every two years?
I think we proposed every two years for long for you guys.
You gave, you said you could do every two or three year.
Yeah, yeah, if it's, if it's two, you could do either way. So, to give you an idea, this image was taken in twenty-twenty on the right. This is from twenty-twenty-three, so three years later, you can see what's changed on that property. So, but yeah, you can only tell based on, so say we flew every two years here, we flew in twenty-six for you, and then we came back in twenty-eight, you would be able to see everything that's changed between twenty-six and twenty-eight. Or if a campus had fly a year late.
So will it just be a map versus a map, or will it, would it list, like, this parcel has a change?
It will have all that. It will have all your parcel ID, information, everything. Yeah, it will.
So you'll send a list of parcels that have changes?
It's gonna be all automated like this. It does it for you. You just hit start, and it walks you through everything that changes.
Through pictures, or will you have like a listing of parcels?
Pictures.
Pictures.
Yeah, let me see if I can leave real quick for you. Sometimes it's, it's difficult.
Is there, is there ever a case with this change finder that it flags something that there's not something actually there?
Yeah, sure. I mean, you can have false positives, and if you have, you know, say like you have a heavily wooded area or something, like that one that was sitting in the woods, it's possible it could, you know, throw something that might be a false positive. Depending on the level of imagery, that really kind of determines the number of false positives. We take a look at the ortho, and because we fly a few weeks, we take a look at those sets of imagery, so it's chances that are less, but can it happen? Absolutely. Yeah, it's true. So, so let me, let me show you here, and hopefully this will do its thing. In this particular county, this is a county in Kentucky, I forget which one it is. It's, uh, it's got fifty-seven, seven hundred and fifty-four parcels in the county, is what it's got. So if you're in the assessors department, let's say, the PBAs, they call them down there, you would come in here, and before we did this, we would get how you wanna break out your county. If it's taxing districts, whatever it might be, however you're gonna do it, we do it that way. So, fifty-seven, fifty-seven thousand, seven fifty-four parcels. You would come in and you'd say, I wanna see everything that's changed, what's just been changed. Now, watch the matches. So it will get, it's smart. It's already down to sixteen hundred and twenty-nine, so out of all those parcels, it's automatically already narrowed it down to just sixteen hundred and twenty-nine. Now you go in and pick a taxing district, let's say, and we broke this down for them this way, this is the way they want it, it will pick up to. Now it's down to just sixteen, fifty-seven thousand, some odd parcels have changed in this particular taxing district. And then you can even come in here if you want, you can do property class, farm, residential, home, residential, commercial. You can come in and you can change the percentage of change that you wanna see on the particular structure, so let's say you wanna see the big changes. You might say, I wanna see everything on the structures that have changed fifty percent or thirty. It's gonna throw off the most taxed dollars for the county. You can choose any of those that you want. And then the review status in here is to be able to match this up with your camera. So because you guys use Xoft, you can go in here, what a lot of the counties will do is they'll have this up on one screen, and then they'll have the canvas system up on here, and they'll go, and they'll look, and they'll say, do we have this one? Yes, it's on the tax rolls, next. So you can close it out in here, you can say, can you go out for a field inspection, whatever it is that you want to do.
But this can all be done from the assessor's office, correct? It can all be done.
Yeah, yeah. So then we hit start, and let's see if this will. Sometimes it beats a little bit here. Something has changed, it looks like here. Okay, so it looks like it added on to the back of this house here. You see how this is, it looks like it. I don't know. And again, you can't have false positives, but something has changed probably. Yeah, see, they've added on that area up here, to the back of the house. They didn't have that back then. That was in twenty-twenty, this is twenty-twenty-three. So it shows. The other thing this does, because we do building outlines of all the structures in the county before we ever come in and do any of those analysis, it also gives you the change of the area. So it'll, it'll even tell you, based on building outlines, now, it's not an exact number, but it will tell you the previous area of that structure and the current area of the structure. So it's saying this has gone from twenty-two-ten to twenty-six-ninety, based on the building outline change of the structure. It also gives you the parcel ID, so you can go in here and you can match the parcel ID with what you've got in your canvas system to go. Do we have this on the tax rolls, or do we not? And then, that's how a lot of the counties that use Change Finder will go through their county. They'll, they'll have Xoft up over here, and they'll have this up here, and they'll go. And they just go back and forth, and, and it tells them whether they have to change it or they don't, that kind of thing, so. So that, that's just a, that's just a, for instance, I, I don't know, I don't know if there's any change on the front of that, it looks like there was. Yeah, they also changed the front of it. You can see that it's on the front. And, you know, you know, it's possible, you know, people pick these up. So, anyway, these are associated with parcel IDs, so it's identified sixteen. So what you do is, and what we'll do, you just hit next, and it just walks you through everything that's changed. You don't have to go out and look for it, it just identifies it for you. So, it's very simple to use, so you just go in, you go, okay, let's see the next one. This one's changed. This is the same. So when you come around to the back, come around to the backside of the house, that wasn't there in twenty-twenty, it wasn't there in twenty-twenty-three, it is, it's changed. But unless you get outside, you know, it's a rural area, unless you get out and go around and look at everything, it's on the back of the property, you know. Maybe you find, with Tyler and stuff, you know, they're gonna look at things, everything go or do, you know, that kind of thing. But this just allows you to take a look at it, it automates everything, where you just go, okay, it's changed. Previous area of the structure was twenty-eight, twenty-one, now it's thirty-two, twenty-two. And then that's the parcel ID associated with it, so you go into the canvas system and kind of take a peek. So that's how you pretty much work through this. You just go through, and you just continually, this is a good one here. So, I don't know what's going on here, I know this here, but I saw this one not too long ago. This is added on, back there. Who in the world is ever gonna find that, that little, here? Slice back there, and all that mess. So, and it shows that it went from thirty-two fifty-seven to thirty-nine seventy-one, and it gives you the parcel ID again, that you can plug in and and see if you have it on the tax rolls.
Are you able to zoom in and see what kind of structure that is?
Yeah.
Whether it be a porch or an addition?
Yeah, we'll come in from the side over here, you'll probably be able to see it from the side. Right there. It looks like they're in, in the process right now, it's plastic up there.
So that right there, we wouldn't be able to assess it correctly unless we went out there and saw whether it be a porch or a master bathroom and a master.
I don't think it'll show you over here.
Concrete patio before.
Yeah, this.
Can't have the. Yeah, like a little debris bow area. It looks like they just installed that in.
Yeah, and here just from the side, so you can view it from all the different directions.
So this one in particular, you would almost have to go up out there.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, I've looked at this, and it's, it's plastic, so.
Unless we were to assume.
It looks like it's in process. It looks like they have the roof up, but they haven't completed.
Right, it's got a chimney in there too, something on it, fireplace.
Yeah. So, and that's changed. You can also choose new, newly built stuff, demolished stuff, unknown as a category, there's a category. We just couldn't tell exactly what it was. There are some of those where, you know. Yeah, I can't tell you everything.
Correct.
So, and we do have that category as well, we would have to see, so. But that's really pretty much how this functions, both of the, both of the things function, and how the counties use it. There was one last thing I was gonna show you, and then I'll stop, you guys are probably like, I wish you, I wish you'd be quiet. These are your integrations I told you, that I showed you. This is your thing, GIS, WTH. So in here, this is the map that you guys see with all the information. There's a PIC up there in the top. It may look a little bit different now, this one's maybe a little bit older. But you click on the PIC widget, and you click, and then you pull up, and it blings up the imagery right in the WTH system that people are using. And they can move around it north, south, east, and west in that little pocket as well. So it goes in there, and then in the Xoft, here's the Xoft integration. That's the Xoft integration. You can, the imagery will come up right on the parcel ID, you know, it's associated with parcel ID. And then you can also move around, you can, you can do the oblique imagery. So you can stay in Xoft and do all of the imagery as well. You don't have to go to our application. I'll give you an example here. So you can actually measure inside of Xoft at the parcel. It's kind of a bad picture, sorry about that, but you can, you can see your sketch behind here. But you can actually measure on the structure in there as well in Xoft. It used to be, and I don't know if it's still the same, still the same, you used to be able to measure on here. You used to be able to measure on here and it would actually, if it was different than what's on your sketch, you would actually change your sketch right in Xoft as well, which was a pretty big function. But that's kind of everything, guys, and I think I probably warned you folks out. Everybody's probably like, oh, let's get out of here, it's lunchtime.
It's a great tool, it's absolutely a cool.
I appreciate it.
I do have a question about like remodels. Does it catch things like that, like if they, if they're deciding or windows or roof? Or is it just newly added structures?
So we kind of talked about that. So if it's a condition ingrained type of thing, if they're changing certain things, you know, like a siding or something like that. You might be able to tell that it's changed, but on the finer, finer, finer details, some of that stuff you're still going to have to go out and see, you know, like windows and things, you're going to have to do things. Yeah, it's, it won't replace all of that. This is actually a three-inch image, we actually, we actually do one-inch imagery now, if you can imagine. It's, it's pretty crazy, it's pretty close, but it's expensive.
So I have a question, because I think it's a requirement to visit each parcel to make sure there hasn't been new siding in that. But you can pull up like a previous photograph, one image, pull up the new one for comparison purposes, correct? Because out of our GIS or wherever we've got these hosted. So that you can see that we used to have an old asbestos siding on a house, they've replaced it with new vinyl siding. So you could, that way, because you may have the same square footage.
Yeah.
But they have changed the exterior. The interior stuff's always going to be a challenge. The outside, just to click on. Now, we have a lot of parcels that are agricultural. And if they come in, there's no structures on them, it's a, it's a, it's a number generated by the state's going to tell us what the, what the value is because they control that. So those things are, are not going to take the work, but, but I think you would, you would have to look previous, current, to make sure you have a comparison, to make sure it hasn't, you know, changed.
That's a good point, but the pictures that are on the GIS, we take those.
I know you do.
We take those.
But you've got the historical stuff, that's why when we looked at Rome up there, there's been buildings through the years that appeared and they're questionable.
Then if we're not out there, who's going to take those pictures?
Well, this was flown under by GIS. There was no pictures, it was just land and they go, hey, this has never been picked up. Some of these things I think were river cabins that had, maybe they were shelters and the next thing you know, they just kept growing. And I don't think they ever got permitted. This was all brought by the state who came down and didn't appreciate building in the floodway. What brought that all on?
You guys have any other questions?
Thank you.
Oh gosh, you're welcome, thanks for coming.
So I do, this, is there any hosting involved with this? Or could it be hosted right on W?
Yeah, no, so the way this works, the imagery that I showed you in there with Connect Explorer, we host all of that for you, so. Because what happened over time is we, as we moved from twelve-inch imagery down to three-inch imagery or one-inch imagery that we're flying now. The data is just massive anymore. So a lot of the counties couldn't host it themselves because of server costs and all that. So we host all of that. What happens when we fly, it will be put up on the website there that I showed you, the one that we have. And then we'll deliver a hard drive as well to you. And what you would do is you would get in touch with the folks at WTH or Xoft, that kind of thing. And just tell them, just say, hey, we've done a, we've done a pictometry flight and we'd like to get that imagery as a, as a layer into, you know, the system. And they know exactly what to do, we, we worked with all those guys for years and ladies.
Okay, and then if I'm correct, if we flew it in one year, depending on how many years we'd re-fly again, we can spread that payment out over a period of time, so we don't have the initial requirement to pay a hundred percent of it, it can be spread over two or three years, whatever the determining period of time is.
So if we're flying every two years, then seventy-five thousand, then you can break that seventy-five thousand over those two years? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, correct.
And so would be seventy-five.
Flying again, that's seventy-five more thousand.
Divided into two years.
Yeah.
Then the next thing is on the Change Finder, I think you said that it's, it's the full price the first time and then every year after that it's fifty percent?
So the way it works, yeah, it's the, you know, fourteen, four fifty, it's your total cost. But so we would probably do, if you guys were to do your thing here. If we flew in twenty-six, we could refer back to a state flight that you had and we could do building outlines and analysis on the first flight if you wanted. Probably what I would recommend is to do building outlines on the first flight in twenty-six. So it would cost you half of the fourteen fifty, seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then do the analysis on the next flight, the eighth flight, and then that would be the other half. So, and the other thing is, that's seven thousand that you did on each flight, that's on each flight, that wraps into the cost of the flight. If that makes sense, that's seventy-five. And it's just taken out over the two-year timeframe as well. So that seventy-five would be twenty. Does that make sense? Did I make that confusing?
Now, the key to it, the way I interpret this is to, the initial first time, we need to make sure everything's very accurate. And then from that point forward, any kind of changes, additions, new construction, tear downs, would all be pretty much pointed out by the software. So it would, so the base year is critical to make sure that we're.
Yeah, I mean, you know, all the years are, so again, on that twenty-six imagery, let's just say, let's just do that. We would do building outlines of every structure in the county. There would be new building outlines drawn of every, every structure. It comes with, I think it's kind of, it comes with a length of size file, so you'd know all the length of size of every one of the structures as well. And then going forward, so that's your, yeah, I think like you were talking about, that's kind of your jumping off point. Once you have that, then it's just analysis on all the flights going forward. And that's the seventy, seventy-two, twenty-five each flight then. Because once we have building outlines drawn, we just have to do analysis as we go forward because those building outlines get updated on every subsequent flight, once they're done on the first flight. It gets a little confusing, so.
So when I'm out in the field and I have my cell phone. Okay.
I'm going to sorry.
And I'm there. What is it going to tell me? Is it going to tell me the property owner in addition to all four sides of the building? Or, and, and I'm thinking of this as far as our EMS service.
Yeah.
Getting them in and out, where the property is, where they're going to pick up the, where the calls come from. Will it tell us a street address? Because that's generally they have, when they call in currently, they'll say, I'm at a certain number in this road and that's where I, the call's coming from.
I'm going to log out of this because when I log into this, if you're out in the field and you're using a mobile application that's on the phone or if you use it on an Apple tablet, let's say, a lot of people use tablets, you can get it on there. It will log you out of your session if you, if you're, if you're back at the office, that kind of thing. So I'm going to hit log out. I'm just going to, I'm going to hit here and just see if we even have a camera here. I don't think we've got it. I might be able to show you what this looks like on the screen. Do you want me to show you?
Sure, I want to know because I think it might be useful for.
Yeah. I won't be able to answer your question fully, but yes, I can answer it. I won't be able to show it to you probably on here. So on the application on, on the, on the phone, you can turn on different layers that you have, that we've set up in, in your main user thing here, the main system at, at the office. You can turn those on, so you could turn on a parcel ID number, you can turn on street center lines, you can turn on that kind of stuff. But there's one caveat. If you get out into a rural area, it is dependent, because I feel like when they tell you guys, it is dependent on a cell signal, of course, because you're on your phone. So if you do get out in a very rural area, this might be a challenge to try and do, you know what I mean? It's, it will work hard to do its thing, so.
We battle that every day.
I'm sure you probably do. Let's see here. Need this to work, let's see. Okay. That's what's showing on my phone.
For your location.
Well, so I'm going to show you, we're not going to have anything here, I don't believe, although I think we fly for a ton of counties in Kentucky, I cover them too. But if there's one over the water, we have to fly out sometimes to get, so we may have something around here, I don't know. This is the Find Me button, we'll see if anything comes up. Yeah, there it is. Is that you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have it.
So do we get a discount then?
Actually, you get it for free. Whatever we've flown, you know, this is cleared back from February twenty-sixth, twenty-twelve. So what we can do, and I'm going to go slow with this because otherwise, it's pinch to zoom, just like on a tablet or a phone or anything you do. So I don't, I didn't look to see if we had imagery here, I guess I probably should have. Yeah, I'll tell you the reason my phone is struggling. I'm in this building and it's not hooked into the Wi-Fi that people was. If I hooked into your Wi-Fi, it would be zip-a-dee-doo-da-day. But, so we can move in, there's the building. And you can go around this north, south, east and west. This is from twenty, okay, now we're at twenty-two, twenty-three. So we actually have imagery, so the counties across the way, we have flown. So you would get the twenty-twelve imagery, the twenty-three imagery, whatever we have. Now, it wouldn't be county-wide imagery, it would only be, sorry, the planes came over to get the look-ins for the angles. But there is imagery in twenty-twelve and twenty-two, twenty-three. So what I did is, to answer your question, there's a Find Me button, you can see the little arrow up in the left corner up there. It's nice for public safety folks in any of the different departments that are out in the rural areas because you can just hit the Find Me button, you don't have to go in an address or anything like that. It just finds where you are and it takes you right to that property. With the caveat, you have to have a decent cell signal, otherwise it's not going to do its thing in a great way. And then there are layers up here that you can turn on as well. You can even measure on here, if you can imagine. You can do distances, heights, everything, although it's not very fun on a phone. But if you had a tablet, you could do it. So here's the layers. These are all the different layers and things that you could put in there and turn on out there. Street center lines, any of that stuff. So to answer your question, yes, you could, but if cell signals are a difficult deal and in a good portion of the county, it might be difficult to do it this way.
So let me take you back to another question I just posed. If I have something that pops up as a new build, something that's a little weird with my Change Finder. So I can take my pad out there to the side, even though the gate's locked and I can't get behind the gate. And I can pull up my imagery on my pad and look at that whole property around there, measure it, do whatever I need to do without the need to get through the gate onto the property itself, correct?
Yeah, because this phone that you're seeing would function just like the iPad would or the Google Tablet or whatever it might be. And again, you can, yeah, you can go right in. And if it's a tablet, the nice thing about it is you can go into the Google or the Apple Store, just get the app, open the app and you can do your thing from there, you know. But again, with the caveat that.
But you don't have to have service.
Yes.
Very limited service, I'll be honest.
I saw it, so you get mad at me and go, okay, he said that, you know, this would do its thing and it is doing its thing, so, yeah.
So thinking public safety, if we would have like other departments use this, I'm guessing there's like a view only for like our public safety because we don't need our public safety and EMS all in the parcels and all that stuff.
Yeah.
I'm kind of looking, thinking comparable to, you know, our GIS.
Yeah.
Would they, is there like, if, would our public safety or officers and EMS be able to have access to this digitally without the whole, all the stuff that the assessor and?
Yeah, yeah, they sure would. So if we didn't go into it in there, I was, I didn't have to get you guys too deep in the weeds a little bit, but just for time, but. There's an admin section in the Connect Explorer that I showed you where we were looking at Boonville over there. In there, up in the right corner, it looks like a little person, you just click on there and it's called Connect Admin. And you can go in there and that's where you add and delete users and that kind of thing. It's very easy to add somebody, you just put in an email address, the name, and I can hit create and boom, they're up and going.
Limited on users or?
Say that again.
Limited on a number of users?
Not really, not that you guys will probably get through, you, you'd have five hundred users here. Yeah, so most of the counties don't. It was based off of LA County, California, we, we work with them, so you can imagine how many people they have, but. So in there, there's what's called sub-organizations. So if the assessor's office, let's say, was the main, main organization at the top, you might have the city police, the county sheriff's office, you know. They would each have their own sub-organizations of, say, say the sheriff's department uploaded a sex offender, something that they wanted to keep private only to them. It's like at a school and in here, you can do a five-hundred-foot like barrier from the school where sex offenders can't go any closer. You can save that in there, they can keep that and it's only viewable for them. So each individual department at the county or, you know, what have you, can have stuff that is just strictly for them and not viewable by the other departments.
I think that's a valuable thing to, to, to be known. It's not just something that the assessor's office can use. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, you're, it's a, definitely you've got more tools than just the assessor's office. I'm sitting here thinking, we miss a lot of splits. And if we had these views to be able to actually see, because you can't see as much on GIS, you'd be able to see more of this.
Yeah.
But the split would have to occur in your office to be able to be seen there. So if you missed it, you're not going to catch that there.
Correct, but we can still see, see the mapping part of it.
On your original map of the counties that are participating?
Yeah.
It looked like most of our surrounding counties aren't. Any particular reason you feel that? Sorry, I put you on the spot, but if it's just cost or if it's?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. A lot of times, you know, your folks down in this area, I could pull that map back up. On the far east, before you go into Ohio, there's a couple over there.
Or is it, maybe we do it and then everybody else will be like, oh?
Sometimes that happens. A lot of times it comes down to cost, you know. A lot of times some of the counties just, you know, if they don't have a lot of infrastructure, they don't have a big tax base, that kind of thing, they don't, you know. They don't bring it on for one reason or another. And the other part would maybe, I might just stink explaining it to a lot of people. They're just like, you know, why that guy stinks, I'm not going to bring anything.
The other part of that is, so the counties that are participating, do you have any that we could reach out to just to get their opinion on how things are going? Or their percentages on, yet we've, we've been able to increase our, you know, taxes by, our revenues?
I call Barhalem U. County, they're Columbus, Indiana, and that area.
Okay.
Because I think Randy had talked to Jenny Biffle at AIC. So their, their parcel count is thirty-eight thousand, I think, a little over that. She has, they have pictometry, she was flying every other year, I think they just agreed council to go every year, right?
I think that's right, they're going, yes.
I think that's what she's going, yeah. And she has seven full-time people, two part-time people plus herself. And she has four people that, that all they do is do, do that Change Finder and that. Then she has groups of two that go out and review to check for effective year changes, those type of things. So she's still got people doing this, but she still has people in the field as well.
And it would, I think it would be, not saying we're going to switch, but if we would do this, it would be a task at first to go through those properties that have been flagged as a change. But I think if you just kind of, you know, maybe made a goal, do fifteen properties per day or not, maybe not even that, but you could slowly work your way through those. I really think we're, see.
And then you have to start off, start back over.
Yeah, but that, you still have to start back over every, I mean.
And, and that's what we're doing now, we, we. And, and that's what we're doing now, we, we work our way through it, start back over on the four-year cycle, work your way through the whole county, start, that, that's the statistical reassessment, that's, that's what that is. Four years.
And another thing to mention, if that were the case, just compared to that other county, we do not have the staff to be able to do all of that, there is no way.
I don't think anybody, and nobody's saying that, however, we're paying, we're paying Tyler to do that, so maybe some of those costs could come out of that.
And, and they do a lot of desktop, they, they do do that. So, you know, again, they would use it as a tool, the same as we would. But it, it's, it's not replacing them, it's just an added...
No, but we wouldn't be paying them to do that if we already had, if, you know, you know what I'm saying? That, that contract would change, and money would come, it'd be less, and be able to put some more, either an additional person back to you guys.
It's sometimes less, maybe.
Right.
Probably, but then you have the added cost of this, and, and is it gonna shift it?
But that's what we're trying to figure out.
Does Tyler do any of this?
I'm sorry?
Does Tyler have any of this?
They, they use, I think Troy said they have multiple counties that use...
I said, do we use any of it?
They use Eagle View, I, and you may know how many counties that Tyler Technologies have that have Eagle View, I know it's probably a lot.
I don't know. It's a quick question between, between the next...
I think you have Warwick County, right?
We do, we have.
Okay, and I know Tyler has Warwick County.
I know, but, I mean, does Tyler have this in Perry County?
No.
Okay, that's what, that was what I was asking.
Well, well, but Tyler doesn't, none of the counties that have Eagle View, does Tyler own that? Or, and bring that to the county, the county have purchased that, and then Tyler, you did that.
See, that's what I'm, that's, your numbers, like the 77, look at them, I mean, that popped out to me, because I think of that with my vendors that I use, you know, they're in 80, 80 of the 92 counties. Of these 77, are most of them, is there a way we can get the information as far, or counties that are using it as a tool? Of that 77, how many are using it as a tool and also have the outside? Or how many of them are full-fledged, this is all they're using to do their assessment? I, yeah, to replace, because I think that's, that's where you need to, that's a, that's a valuable information.
Yeah.
Because if 77 counties are using it, and 50 of them are just using it as a tool, but also have the other, that's, that's something...
Yeah.
I think that's information that the commissioners and, and offices need, or that need to know, as far as that.
I can throw in a question through the assessor's email chain, and just ask, how many counties have pictometry? Eagle View, how many counties of those that have it also contract with a vendor?
Some of them will even do commercial, you know what I mean? A lot of, you know, a lot of the counties, it's just so hard, because, you know, some will contract for commercial, but they'll do personal property anywhere, you know, it's, yeah, it's, it's just such a lot of things.
Yeah, because we would still have to contract out commercial and industrial ratio studies, validating sales and such, versus just residential.
There are four counties, four or five counties in the state of Indiana that do all of it in-house. And those are Vigo, Marion, Hamilton, and Allen. Those are all huge counties, and Allen County, I know their assessor's office has like 113 employees.
They've got a lot. You go up there, it's, yeah.
But they have a lot of parcels too, so it's a big one that...
Yeah.
Don't contract them. They do it all 100% in-house. But they have huge staff as well.
I was gonna say, this was a wonderful presentation, and I think it's a great idea to look at different, different things, I mean, I think that's, yeah.
The technology is just amazing to me, I mean, how they can, you can do this. I never knew it existed.
Yeah.
And I think it's good that we know now it exists, and what we can do with it. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for the time.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Turn, second, first, whatever.
Hi.